Future, something comes available that is best aligned with what we prioritize in mathematics instruction. So, no, in no way did approving a three-five curriculum hamper us in any way to make a decision this time around for K-2.
Okay. And then, I guess, again, in terms of the whole idea of painting oneself into a corner, the other question I had is in regards to Singapore math, which it's not a secret that lots of people are very, very enthusiastic about Singapore. And I guess my question is, is there, if we had, or if there had been a decision to go with Singapore, would that have somehow impacted the curriculum as it's been presented to us for K through two and through three through five? So by adopting the three through five and writing the K through two curriculum to go along with the three through five, would that kind of preclude us wanting to implement Singapore since Singapore appears to be different from the curriculum that we have? Am I making that clear? I know, I'm sorry, I'm kind of rambling, but...
If I don't answer what I think you're asking, let me know.
Okay, thanks.
As I said to Mr. Carey, a curriculum is a curriculum. A Common Core standards are Common Core standards. They identify what students should know and be able to do regardless of the resource that you utilize. So, let's say we brought forward this evening Singapore math. We would still have that first portion of our presentation this evening on our curriculum. Because we are, because State of Connecticut signed on for Common Core, we in essence are required to adopt Common Core in our district. Hence adopting those content standards and mathematical practices that are identified in Common Core. So, the curriculum is not, the adoption of a resource is not really impacted by a curriculum this evening. But rather, whether we brought forward Singapore Investigations or nothing, our curriculum would still be our curriculum.
Okay.
And we, our goal is, as many districts, if not all, but I'm not going to be that inclusive, is to have a curriculum that each town should identify what children should know and be able to do in their town, and then find the best resources to implement that curriculum. That's really, in the education world, how it goes.
Okay. Well, I guess just to follow up on that, to use two examples, you've got a town like New Canaan that has Turk, and you've got a town like Westport that has Singapore. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but the impression I've gotten from speaking to people in both of those towns is that these are not only simply a book, but it is a program that the Singapore program adopted by Westport was not written by the teachers in Westport or the curriculum leaders. It was a program, kind of a package deal, the same with Turk and New Canaan. And I guess my question would be, I mean, on the surface, and again, I am not a teacher, I'm not an administrator or a math person, but there would be something kind of, I don't know, comforting is the right word, but to have a whole package given to you soup to nuts so that you would be able to utilize it through the PD to get the development. And these are obviously two, they're very different programs from what I can tell, and yet both districts are very enthusiastic about them. And there still is a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done to implement them. But is there some reason why, and I understand now that the curriculum was written over the summer by the teachers and a tremendous amount of time was put into that, but I guess my question is, was there some point where we decided it would make more sense to do it ourselves instead of getting the whole package and then work with that? I guess that's my question.
I'm not sure if I'm following you. But if there was a text resource that we felt was soup to nuts, our conversation would be different this evening. What we found from the data analysis we collected, we didn't find the soup to nuts. We found some soup and not nuts, and we found some nuts and not soup. And if there is a, and I really don't want to use the word program, because in our educational world, we're not purchasing a program, we're purchasing resources that have many facets to it. So if there was a resource out there that had met more of the components that are a priority to us, and that are better aligned to the curriculum we've written based on the Common Core, we'd be making that proposal this evening. But at the writing of the curriculum, prior to researching a resource, really didn't kick out all the resources. You're going to write a curriculum anyway. The resource does not become the curriculum, which I think is a big misunderstanding.
Okay, well, yeah, it is. I mean, and I know I've gotten a number of, I've had a number of conversations with people who believe that Singapore is a program. It is not purely the book. There is the program that goes with it. I think that's where there's some confusion, and I'm just trying to get some clarity. I think it might be helpful.
I would agree. I would agree that a resource like Singapore and a resource like Investigations comes with a preferred instructional method. And so they are delivering the same standards, if you will, in different ways. Hence, the difference in preference of some people choosing to go with Singapore and some people going with Investigations. So, as far as defining a program, if you will, it comes with a preferred instructional model and preferred resources, a preferred workbook. But I haven't done this personally, but Mr. Wakeman may have, going to guess that it's based on similar standards and expectations for mastery in each grade. Because each district has to align to Connecticut's standards regardless of what resource they use.
Right. Okay, all right, thank you.
Mrs. Cannelli is next, but Mrs. Cannelli, Mrs. Brand, I think, wanted to ask a follow-up on one of Jessica's questions, if you don't mind, a quick follow-up.
And thank you, Mrs. Gerber. I agree. I think some of the programs actually are so prescriptive that it has to be aligned with the text. And what we're doing is a curriculum, and now we're trying to find a text that blends and complements that. Moving forward, with that in mind that we already have a curriculum with three through five, I would ask that, if you wouldn't mind, if someone would send me again the three through five, so when I'm looking at it, I'm looking at the continuity. Also, if we don't have a textbook, three through five, and we don't have one pre-K through two, could we have the groups meet together so that we also are assured there's a real lot of continuity and blend in the pre-K through elementary? I mean, these folks are putting in an awful lot of time. To me, it would make sense that that transition from second to third, and the blend would be there. So if we're going to be looking at textbooks for elementary and pre-K, let's do it jointly.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Cannelli.
Okay. I do have a series of questions. First, so exactly what are we using to create the units for the K through two?
As far as resources?
Yes.
We will be utilizing, for the most part, resources that we currently have in the district. What we have purchased in the past, what we have used in the past, as some of the resources are, we, obviously, is Scott Forsman, we do have the, some context for learning resources in that, those grade, that would be appropriate for those grade levels. We do have some Math Their Way. We also have some of the Marilyn Burns. There are a variety of resources that are still, that the district currently owns that we can utilize. Again, it isn't about implementing the text, as it is mapping the standards across the year so that students will progress through those standards to be able to meet the end of the year expectations.
Okay. And I was wondering if you could tell us more about the nature of the professional development. Up until now, I'd been assuming we would get a text, thinking we'd get a text, and therefore I knew the professional development would, you know, be very focused on that. So therefore, what, you know, who's delivering this professional development, and exactly what is the focus of it?
The primary focus, again, because we're talking about a shift in instructional practice, the emphasis is on content knowledge about mathematics. What does it look like developmentally on the developmental continuum as you go through pre-K through two? And so the emphasis really is on understanding that mathematics. And the other part of that is looking at pedagogy and understanding how do those mathematical practice standards come alive in the classroom for children? So again, that's another emphasis. It is not about so much understanding how to use a text and utilizing the text in the classroom as it is understanding the mathematics and the mathematics instruction.
Okay. Now, there's been a lot of discussion about working, you know, we obviously heard about the three-through-five curriculum and, you know, seeking to align with that. But before we, and I completely believe in all the excitement that the students are having in the classroom. I have a fourth grader, he's, you know, feels like the most brilliant mathematician, certainly not a math engineer. But before we get so focused on aligning with that, how do we even measure that what we're doing there is successful? We had a year-long pilot program, which has now returned some test results from the four different schools. So how do we know that that's actually where we want to be?
I'm not sure.
We had the force, Dwight Burr Jennings-Holland Hill went through the pilot program last year. So they have had a chance to produce test results by which we get, again, it's only a year, I'm very familiar with the idea, that's only a, just a window into the, this is achieving what we want to achieve. And anecdotal evidence is absolutely compelling, but now we also do have some test results. So I was wondering, before we go gung ho, we must align with what we're doing, we need to measure that what we're doing is producing the results we want.
We agree.
So I'm wondering about the evidence of that.
And, Mr. Wakeman, I know moving the microphone back and forth sometimes is difficult, but please speak directly.
We do have in-house assessments that we use, that we provide to all students in the districts three through five, three times a year. And so we are looking at past data on that, comparing it to current data. If there are any areas that we need to bolster, again, we have had teacher feedback from last year, and it, just as a note, all the schools in the district were utilizing some resources and getting their understanding of the professional development through these resources. And so we asked teachers for their feedback, and during the course of the summer, we addressed some of their concerns. And so we are very open to listening to teachers about whatever needs are not being met in the buildings and as far as our students' performance go, to address them immediately.
Okay, but do we, I guess that would be something I'd be interested in getting, is a comparative test results. I mean, not only by cohort to know how thirds proceeded to fourth, but also how did one fourth...
Based on one year? You're looking for one year?
And I, I understand absolutely that that's, that is, it's almost premature. But I still would be interested in seeing, has there been anything measurable with that? With it either maybe by content strand, or is any part of it showing any measure of success at this point? Is what I'd be curious about.
We'll take a look.
Okay, thank you. And, oh, I, actually, I apologize, I should have started with my own thanks to everyone. Enormously appreciate all the work that was done. One specific part of the presentation that I appreciated was seeing where the standards were exceeding Common Core. Having that specifically pointed out, I appreciate, because we certainly would have asked if we hadn't seen it, so thank you. But there's one part of this entire extremely long presentation and very thorough presentation that's been completely lacking, and that's research. We're not operating in a vacuum. None of these textbooks were created yesterday. I think it is very glaring that there is a complete lack of consistency with our own teacher reports versus what we've heard in districts that have had the full professional development. And obviously, this is specifically with regard to the Singapore and the Math in Focus. I'm not for one minute questioning the reactions of our teachers to their experience. I do absolutely question that they had a Singapore experience, that lacking that full professional development, lacking the supplementation that was needed. We don't expect, I mean, all of them are going to need supplementation. We don't expect complete fidelity to the program because we already recognize upfront that that's not what we want, that it's not giving us what I want, that an actual weakness of Singapore is the real-life problem solving, for example. But there are, is decades worth of research out there on these programs implemented elsewhere that nowhere factored into this presentation. These textbooks have track records, and we heard nothing about that tonight. And I find that to be a glaring absence from this. Case in point, I don't recall which board member asked this, but in terms of the priorities of those measures of the textbook up there, I don't think the K through two program has the same priorities as grades three through five. I have read now, in the past few months, extensively on these, and...
Again, please, thank you.
The foundation that gets set in K through two would be almost impossible to make up later. The K through two is about that foundation. I sent, you know, along some articles, and again, I do apologize that I sent my email to you that late. But the idea that there's a January 2013 study that students who have fact recall, as opposed to having to do problem solving, at the basic, basic arithmetic level, perform better on PSATs. So the work we're doing in K and one with this level of math has repercussions junior year and high school. And that type of study is completely lacking from this, this regard of the textbooks. And I was wondering if you have any reaction to why the selection of the textbook was done without regard to the decades worth of research that is out there?
Again, please. Please, thank you.
Comprehensive studies, there is an awful lot of information, I would grant you, on the website about a fair number of resources. Empirical studies, believe it or not, are difficult to come by on elementary resources and programs. I will direct some folks to the What Works Clearing House for a review of some of those. We certainly have been looking and are very interested in what studies are finding about the particular resources. And as far as the research that we have been using, much of which is also research that the, was behind the development of the Common Core state standards. So this work is not being done without understanding of what's on the market, and also without what's research that has also been put forth.
If you recall, one of the slides that Mr. Wakeman had up on the PowerPoint was, you know, how do we develop this curriculum? Research and review was at the top of that list. And research, a review of research is part of our process continuously. What we have never done and didn't think to do this evening is throw up slides of research or share that with you. But certainly are data points that we considered along the way. You know, we had an, actually, almost two-hour presentation prepared for this board, but thought we should have cut that back a little bit. So one hour and 15 minutes was even exceeding our expectations. So I believe that we've had a number of exchanges with some community members, Board of Ed members, teachers, administrators regarding research. And I could find research that will stand up against my opinion if I so choose. So we're happy to find research and share that with you, but I think, you know, we've had some sort of an exchange on that, and you've shared some research points. So I just want to assure this board that research has been part of the development of curriculum as well as the consideration of the choice of a text and resource despite its vacancy from this evening's presentation.
Okay. But there was no evidence from the parent focus group that research factored into any part of their recommendations? I completely believe that the research factored heavily into the curriculum development. That wasn't my question. The question was, again, the selection of the textbook. Case in point, I know Mr. Wakeman pointed me to the What Works Clearing House, and I quote from there that, "In looking at these various curricula," and it mentions a few, "and including Investigations, might have been expected to at least show significant evidence of effectiveness for outcomes such as problem solving. But the experimental studies that qualified for this review," because What Works is very strict in terms of what qualifies, "finds little evidence of strong effects in these areas." Which to me doesn't mean it's not a decent program, but it's not moving the dial. I mean, we're, I think in Fairfield, we're looking to improve. We're, it's, we are a strong educational district. People come here for our schools. But I want us in the conversation of the DURGAY schools. I want, I think we can do that. And as I look at the, again, at this, you know, one point that had been a remark made in one of the debriefing sessions, that a point in favor of Investigations was it was something that our teachers would be comfortable with. And I don't denigrate that as a point of importance. On the other hand, if we're going to be looking to improve, we're going to need to stretch our faculty as well, and obviously, critical professional development for that. But I've got pages of research here. I've got the, the one from the American Institute for Research, "What the United States Can Learn From Singapore's World-Class Mathematical System." I repeat, world-class mathematics system. And again, it just seems that this research component was completely missing from the selection of the textbook, not the curriculum, but from the selection of the textbook.
Thank you. I think Mr. Fattabene has a question. I do remind the board that the recommendation at the moment is only on the curriculum, not on a textbook, and that further research needs to be done, not only similar to last spring's comment, but with the K-2 curriculum as well. Mr. Fattabene?
It's probably less of a question, more of a comment. I guess, I'd like to quickly thank everyone. It's a very difficult subject, I think, and it's obvious in the sense that all these other districts that, that had, that you had looked at, seem to have picked different strategies to implement their curriculum, all of them also very enthusiastic about their selection. So I don't think there's necessarily one right or wrong selection one can make, other than what is right for our particular district. So I'm not certain if I have an answer for that, or if there is an answer for that. But as far as the curriculum documents go, in my review of the curriculum documents, I think they do demonstrate an orderly progression of different math concepts, going from, in essence, counting to measurement data, to geometry, all the way up until applying those to money and place values at increasingly higher orders. So there's a progression, an orderly progression as far as the curriculum and the development of math concepts. How one conveys and gets students to understand math concepts has been, more than likely, diffusely for probably 5,000 years since math has been, I don't know, 5,000, I'm sure the Egyptians had, had quite a bit of math in their...
Paul speaks from personal experience.
I'm sure that when they built the pyramids, there was quite a bit of math involved, and they had to invoke some sort of concepts to the people that were developing those. And I'm sure a lot of those concepts have not, and actually, implementation of math has not changed as far as math is sort of what I would consider in essence a constant in the sense, it's a question of how you partake that and teach that information, get students to absorb it quickly and go as far as they can in their education. And has it been a challenge, I say, for a long time, and I'm not sure. But I guess at one point, we're emphasizing now, not just the curriculum, which, in essence, as I mentioned, seems to be an orderly progression of math concepts and so forth, but how to implement that in what is strategy or instructional model? And what text is going to be best in implementing whatever strategy or instructional model that is selected? My concern is that whatever text or instructional model is utilized, that we do see measured results and improvement in achieving the concepts for all the students, in achieving what is in this curriculum document, and that they progress in that fashion. So I would like to see some evidence that whatever instructional model and strategy is selected, that we are making progress, and if we don't make progress, at what point do we change our strategy and instructional model to assure that these curriculum documents in the progressive structure of the material in them is, is absorbed by the students and they achieve their, the goals of the district? So I guess that's sort of a long-winded comment as I perceive this and we, as we move forward.
Thank you. We've had about an hour and 15-minute presentation by the staff. We've had about an hour, hour and 15 minutes of conversation among the board. It may be that, without a textbook being recommended, that those in the audience who came may say, "Well, I don't need to speak, and I'm just going to go home." But there may be some in the audience that will want to speak, and so, so that we can get to them at some appropriate hour. I'll ask if board members have any final questions or comments that they wish to make, and if not, we'll move on with the rest of our agenda so we can get to the public. We will have more conversation and discussion at the next meeting, at which I presume this will be on for action. And so, curriculum, correct. And so if there are questions or requests for information that have come, please get those questions in. But if there are any other questions now, feel free to ask. Mrs. Brand?
Yeah, perhaps next time we could have a little bit more elaboration on the curriculum part. We spent an awful lot on the text, but the curriculum part we didn't, and I would, I really would appreciate just a walkthrough. I think it would be very helpful.
Any other comments? Are we done with this item? Okay. Thank you very much to the staff and also to the public for their patience in listening to both the conversation and the presentation. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is approval of the minutes. And so I ask for the recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 26, 2013. Mrs., sorry, Ms. Iakona, I'll get my voice out, and Mrs. Gerber. Any questions on the minutes? You have a question, Mrs. Cannelli?
I'm looking for two points of clarification from Dr. Title. On page two of the minutes, second paragraph from the bottom, Mr. Confortito asked if every teacher and administrator needed to be, I wanted to make sure that the minutes were correct, needed to be evaluated every year. Ms. Bobowick stated yes. Isn't that, in fact, wrong? That by the second-year teachers, administrators who achieve a certain level, they no longer require the three formal observations per year, so that...
Oh, the statute requires every teacher is evaluated every year. However, there can be differences in what that evaluation is composed of. So you, under the current law, every teacher has to be evaluated every year. Some teachers right now are evaluated with, you know, one observation, two observations, goals only. So the, that is the correct answer, but there can be variations with what that teacher's endures for the year in their evaluation.
Right. So I couldn't, I couldn't, I mean, I, obviously, I live that, but I didn't know if that's how it had been phrased, and wanted to see if that understanding was the same. My next question was on page three in the big paragraph, about eight lines down, I think. Ms. Iakona asked who evaluates the administrators. Dr. Title stated that there's no change in the organizational chart. My question is, is that the, I don't know if that answered the question, and I didn't know if this was a correct quoting of you or paraphrasing of you. The organizational chart doesn't indicate who is actually doing the evaluations, as in, is every single person listed in the organizational chart qualified and certified to do evaluations?
Yeah, it's, I have to go back and look at it in the, in the regs, it's actually where it is. But it has them as a group. So, for example, the current model is that Ms. Katia Leonard evaluates the elementary principals. So that shows in the organizational chart, and that doesn't change. Now, what she has to do to evaluate them changes, but the, we're not anticipating changes in who's evaluating whom in terms of the administrator evaluation. So I evaluate the central office administrators, and so that's not going to change. So currently, everybody is qualified, certified, to evaluate the administrators who's doing so. We don't anticipate that that will change. And so it's, I think, referred people to the organizational chart for the specifics about which positions are evaluated by whom.
I knew it was a report-to system. I didn't know if it was always the formal evaluation, so thank you.
Well, that, yeah, that's how, yes.
Any other questions, Mrs. Cannelli? Any other questions from the board? Are we ready to act? All in favor of the minutes as presented, raise your hands. It is...
Abstention.
Yes. Eight in favor, one abstention. It is the custom for the public that if a board member is not at a meeting, they abstain from the minutes. As you'll note, the students sat through the three-five curriculum presentation last spring, and perhaps they learned from that experience. And they stayed home to do their homework. Do we have board committee liaison reports that anybody wishes to make? On any of the board liaisons, Mrs. Brand?
Just to go through the advisory committee, we do have a meeting at 5:00 this Thursday in the superintendent's conference room. The agenda in the minutes will be posted if they haven't been already. At Sess, Stefan Pryor spoke, and I just thought it was very timely in that he was talking about many districts have sent in their teacher evaluation plans and administrative evaluation plans, and how they're approaching it in a myriad of ways. In addition, they are talking about, again, at the state level, about cutting red tape. And some of that red tape is actually talking about instruction time, qualifications and certifications for instruction, like teachers, and also school calendars, and how flexible they're going to make these school calendars. In fact, one of the things I asked is if they're talking about how much we have, whether we have 180 days or not, if we... whether we have 180 days or not, if we decide to spread them over our summer or not, or if a district, for instance, meets their performance requirements, would they then reduce the number of days they're in school? So there are a lot of questions still remaining with that. There also are plans still evolving as to how to evaluate specials, like library media specialists, art, music, phys ed. And since we're all in the throes of this, they are talking about perhaps having CES or an organization like that evaluate teachers that, quote, "have specials" at this time. And I'm telling you this because, quite frankly, this is changing so fast. I really felt it was pertinent, because everything that we're doing here right now has an impact on that. So, that's it.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports, committee reports? Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
In deference to the late hour, I will pass.
I want the minutes to record. That is the shortest superintendent's report on record. Onto new business, item A, which is enclosure three, the request of Fair TV Cable Advisory Council. For board members, as you know, this was on last meeting's agenda. And we were looking, I was looking for a couple of extra pieces of information before we took action on it, and so that I could make sure I described it clearly. I don't know whether Ron Davis is in the audience or anybody else that... In one minute, maybe. So, Fair TV, as you know, who is broadcasting this event, is part of a six-town area cable access council. We're in what is called Area Two. Those councils are set up by state legislation. And state legislation provides for a certain number of members by population to be appointed to the council by the towns through the first selectman's office. What has become known to us recently is that state legislation also allows each Board of Education to appoint somebody to the council. And so we were asked by the local Fair TV operating council to consider doing so. The bylaws that they have, the Cable Area Council, Area Two, state that it can be a member of the Board of Education, or it can be a member of the public. It doesn't have to be either or. So then I contacted Ron Davis so that I could confirm that the request and the welcomeness of us to do so came from the council and not from the Fair TV operating group, if you're following all of this. He sent me an email confirming that fact. And so our bylaws provide for me to make appointments to local bodies, as I may deem appropriate, by members of the Board of Education. It doesn't really speak specifically to... And I can appoint somebody from the public to serve as well. And I thought, they want somebody, the local Fair TV wants somebody. They've suggested a name of somebody willing to serve. I'll just appoint them. But I thought, before we took that action, since this is a new relationship, if you will, that I would ask the board if they had any viewpoints on this before I moved forward, so I could be guided by how the board felt.
Your interpretation of the bylaws are such that you would be able to appoint this individual? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's, my interpretation of the bylaws is that this is a unclear area. You know, it says that I can appoint members of the Board of Education. It doesn't say I can appoint members of the public. And that's why I brought it before this board, so that you could give me some guidance as to whether first, maybe the board just says, "Thank you very much, but we'll pass. We have enough things to do, and we're not going to avail ourselves of this opportunity." And if the board does want to avail themselves of this opportunity to appoint another Fairfielder to a member of the Cable Area Council, Area Two, that does the board want to consider somebody from within the board? Or accept their suggestion of who was, should be appointed, who could be appointed? I wanted guidance from the board before I just...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Some of the documents you gave us, it says that the Cable Advisory Committee of Area Two, under their bylaws, have a provision to appoint a representative to the council. But it also says it cannot be a Board of Education member.
That's one of the things I wanted to clarify. And I'll say, the original email was not exactly accurate.
All right. So that's not necessarily true. But that's just the document I have.
Yeah, I use a kind of word, but I guess that's, the answer's yes. So their bylaws specifically state it can be a member of the Board of Education, or it can be a member of the public, at the discretion of the Board of Education.
All right. So if it's a member of the Board of Ed, you can appoint them.
Correct.
If it's a member of the public, I would think it would have to be the whole board that appoints them. That's who I would...
Sure. I mean, you let me know what you want to do. Yes.
I was just going to offer this, since you're asking for guidance. If there's no member of the Board of Ed that wishes to serve, that we just offer... What's it called? What's that thing when we just...
Sense of the board?
Yes, thank you. Brain has gone along with my voice.
So, in case you didn't hear that, "Offer a sense of the board."
The body, that the chairman could go ahead and appoint the recommended person from the Cable Advisory Group. But I would first just ask that you give courtesy to any board member that wanted. But otherwise, just take the recommendation from the committee that's actually doing this work.
I would smile and ask if Mrs. Cannelli wanted to serve in that role. Mrs. Brand, I don't want to... At the Board of Finance, they made a comment about, "I don't want to beat a dead horse." And then they said "but," and continued. So I don't want to drag this conversation out longer than it needs to be, but I am looking for guidance.
I'm perfectly comfortable with having you appoint. And I'm also perfectly comfortable, I believe there's a name that was already given to us.
The other Tom Flynn.
Right. Know the person would be great as a representative, and would be happy to support that.
Any other comments? Mr. Confortito.
Section 1220, Community Relations. Participation by the public, citizens advisory committees, of which may be composed of one. Okay. In order to maximize community input, the board recognizes the need for appropriate ad hoc citizen advisory committees. The board will consider the recommendations of these committees when making decisions. The board, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, will make all appointments of citizens, staff members to the advisory committee. Board encourages representation from all appropriate town bodies. It would be my opinion that, upon recommendation of the superintendent, the board would vote on it and appoint him to that committee.
Yeah, I think that part of the bylaws refer to advisory committees established by this board. This is not an advisory committee established by this board. The language might give us some guidance on how to do it, but this is not an advisory committee of this board.
It is under Community Relations, not as specific.
Other comments that people wish to make? Mrs. Iaccona.
Can I just try to end beating the dead horse and just take a friendly sense of the body that we appoint the, quote-unquote, "other Mr. Flynn" to this commission? Unless I see another board member interested?
I would propose, in a sense, I think that since there's no provision, I know in the bylaws, for the chair to appoint a citizen to a committee. And the bylaws of the Cable Advisory Council of Area Two, as I understand it, permit the Board of Ed to appoint a representative to that council, that I would move that, as, I would suggest, the proper procedure would be to make a motion to appoint Thomas Flynn to the, for the board to make, for the board to appoint Thomas Flynn.
You first have to add it to the agenda. That's the problem. That's why I was just trying to say sense of the body, make it fast.
Usually, a sense of the body is to do things you have not the power to do. Since the board has the power to do that.
So, why don't you say, make a motion to add this item to the agenda?
Make a motion to add.
All right. I'd make a motion to add an agenda item.
Is there a second for that, Mrs. Gerber? Is there, is there a discussion? If not, let's take a vote on adding this item to the agenda or not. All in favor of adding this item to the agenda? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay, now we are good by our state required bylaws. So, now make your motion.
I move to appoint Tom Flynn.
Use the, use the address.
Of 67 Satchem Road, Fairfield, Connecticut, to the Cable Advisory Council of Area Two.
Second. Second.
And I comment on the motion?
That's it. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that motion?
The only comment would be that he is the Fair TV Operation Committee nominee to that advisory council suggestion.
Suggestion.
And that in the future, should this board consider candidates, I would like to see them sort of homegrown or come from members of the board versus a Fair TV Operational Committee that sort of is appointing, in essence, is recommending someone to go on a council and which they're being supervised by.
As we get accustomed to this role, I'm sure that will happen. If there are no other comments, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand by saying aye. And aye, it's unanimous. Okay. Thank you very much. We have a first reading of Policy 5514, Students' Administration of Medication in the Schools. That's enclosure number four. Mrs. Cannelli.
Probably the most important sentence is the opening one, which is, well, forget sentence, phrase, "in compliance with the Connecticut General Statutes." This policy was to bring us into compliance. We did our customary thorough tearing apart job. And what you see before you is with the advice of statute, it is with the guidance of Cabe. I'm not sure where there might be any questions, but...
What Mrs. Cannelli's inside joke is, is that Dr. Parks gets hazardous duty pay for attending the policy committee meetings as there's an English teacher and two lawyers who comprise that committee. Mrs. Brand.
I actually also attended that committee meeting. And I also spoke with, and had spoken prior. But I know there was support from this, from the Board of Health, and also from specifically the nursing director, because I spoke with her last night, which you already know, it's already documented. But I'll reiterate, you have my full support as well.
Any other comments that people wish to make at the first reading? This will be on the agenda for the next regular board meeting for adoption. No further comments or questions? Moving on. We are now at the point of public comment. I recognize that my comment may not save us any time, but we are only going to be voting on the curriculum. There may be other days that are available to chat about whether we should or should not adopt a textbook. But at the moment, the recommendation is only adopting the curriculum. And so to the extent that conversation could be focused on that anticipated action, we would appreciate it. But nonetheless, this is two minutes for you to make whatever comments that you wish. So please come up to the microphone, give your name and address. And I'll ask for your forgiveness in advance if I continue to stay firm with the two minutes. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Elena Riley.
I don't think that's on...
Oh.
Hello, my name is Elena Riley, and I've taught fourth grade for many years in Fairfield. My colleagues and I at Stratfield School have fully embraced Fairfield's math curriculum. Our instructional model for math has had a strong impact on discourse among students in the classroom. Children are having conversations about the ways in which they are solving problems. Through investigations of authentic tasks, students are able to make connections to the real world and therefore discuss their understandings of mathematical concepts and problems. This interaction and discourse allows these children to gain confidence, independence, and autonomy, traits that are much needed among our society today. Through this instructional model, which is also aligned to the Common Core State standards, students are gaining and acquiring higher-order thinking skills, which taps into different parts of the brain, therefore exercising it to think in different ways. During the Congress part of the lesson, students explain, show, and share the work they have done. Throughout this part of the lesson, there is discourse, confidence, motivation, independence, and multiple ways in which students explain how they solved and came to their mathematical conclusions. This allows other students, who may not be as confident, to observe others sharing their investigative work through discussion. It then helps others to gain the confidence and independence necessary to do the same. I have witnessed this unfold in my classroom for several years in this way. My colleagues and I feel strongly that the current three-to-five instructional model has increased rigor, and implementing it at your younger ages would only further show positive growth for our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Lauren Kinsley. I'm a Fairfield resident. I live at 212 Buena Vista Road. I've been a second and third grade teacher at Stratfield School for eight years now. I've been teaching this instructional model in both third and second grade. In third grade, I taught the Kathy Fosnot T-shirt factory. And it increased their conceptual knowledge of place value. I never had a student tell me that 300 is 30 tens before this unit. I am currently teaching second grade and noticed, again, an increased awareness of composition of numbers, dealing with ones, tens, and hundreds. The second-grade team is currently teaching ages and timelines. And we're very pleased with the rigorous discourse these lessons have created. Students are working on authentic tasks involving the ages and birth years of the members of their family. My students are very enthusiastic about sharing all of the different strategies they use. They've learned there's not just one way to solve a math problem. I feel these instructional math units are a positive addition to the curriculum. Thanks.
Thank you very much. State your name and address, please.
My name is Sarah White. I live at 214 Wilton Road in Fairfield. I work as a math teacher at Staples High School in Westport, where, as you know, we've adopted the Singapore curriculum with the elementary grades. I'm here tonight to state my support for Singapore Math as the sole mathematics program in the elementary schools. And I am using the word "program" and "curriculum" synonymously, because we use the words back and forth in Westport. We don't separate one and the other. We've adopted Westport, we've adopted Singapore Math, as you know, full throttle. After hearing that Fairfield was discussing the adoption of a new math curriculum, I spoke to several of my elementary school colleagues about their experiences using Singapore Math. They informed me that students are more engaged in class and have become better problem solvers since using this program. But beyond anecdotal evidence, there is hard data to back up the success they are seeing. Students have shown significant progress based on their scores on the Ames Math Analysis Test. Students in grade one through three, who have had one full year of Singapore Math, only one year of Singapore Math, have showed dramatic increases in test scores. For example, students who are currently in grade three showed a 200% increase in well-above-average scores between fall 2011 and fall 2012. To contrast that, fourth graders, who had almost no Singapore Math at the time, showed a one percentage point decrease in well-above-average scores between fall 2011 and fall 2012. Singapore Math has been so successful, in fact, that third graders are doing math that fifth graders had done in the past. The teachers love Singapore Math because students are engaged, and the results show that this engagement is leading to quantifiable results. To the committee, I would like to say thank you for all the hard work you've put into this endeavor. I understand from firsthand experience that revising a curriculum is not an easy process. However, I'm concerned that you have made the decision to wait on choosing a curriculum until new resources come onto the market. I don't understand why you would consider a new, untested resource when Singapore Math is proven and has significant longitudinal success. In today's hyper-competitive society, it is imperative that we give our children the tools to be successful, both in the upper grades and in life beyond their years in the Fairfield schools. To this end, I urge you to implement Singapore Math at the elementary level.
Thank you very much. Some people say that my comments will not keep you from applauding. But honestly, so that every speaker will have an opportunity to speak each time you applaud, it does take time away from another person's opportunity to speak. If I would ask for your forbearance. Thank you. Please, your name and address.
My name is Lindsay Howard. I live at 94 Washington Street in Norwalk. But I'm a second-grade teacher at Riverfield School. And I first wanted to thank the board members that came to see the work being done at our schools. And I'm currently in the middle of doing an ages and timelines part of the Instructional Balanced Math Model. And you're all invited to come to my classroom, if you'd like, to come and check it out, because I know that you really should see the work that's being done to kind of understand it, instead of just seeing it all in a written form. This is our first year that the second-grade team was exposed to the Balanced Math Instructional Model. And I've worked with many different math programs. And even though it was new learning for me and a new model for students, the positive changes I observed in student performance and thinking were apparent. The lessons are naturally differentiated, and we're currently working with open number lines. The students are given a blank piece of paper, which I know it's difficult to move away from, just a workbook idea, a double-digit addition or subtraction problem. At that time, each student has to decide, as a mathematician, how to approach the problem and what operation to use. The resulting, excuse me, the resulting student work has absolutely blown me away, especially since I have a class of 23 students with a wide range of mathematical abilities. As all teachers do, I want to meet the needs of every student. This model allows all students to be successful in their own way. During small group instruction, one of my students, who lacks confidence in her mathematical ability, told me that this was the first time she got math and completed her problems correctly. Her success has encouraged her to take more risks and attack problems in different ways. I support the new pre-K through-two math curriculum, and I'm able to do so because I'm in the classroom... two math curriculum, and I'm able to do so because I'm in the classroom and I've seen and I've had the experience with this model. I'm asking the board to do the same, along with supporting the recommendations provided by the textbook review committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
My name is Kevin Neely, 16 Garden Drive. I teach fourth grade at Riverfield Elementary, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of our grade three, four, and five teachers. The Balanced Math Curriculum builds student understanding of math concepts and provides students with opportunities to solve real-world problems. We know that everyone learns differently and brings different understanding and skill sets to a problem. Learners can approach a problem at their own level, because the structure of the problems allow for natural differentiation and make problem-solving at rather sophisticated levels accessible for all learners. One of the great strengths of the curriculum is that students work collaboratively to solve rigorous problems and are required to justify and explain their thinking to one another. The myriad of ways that students solve the same problem allows other students to see different, however, successful strategies which help build their own problem-solving skills. This promotes flexible thinking about numbers and encourages a deeper understanding of mathematics. It is a shame to give any credence to the critics who offer no firsthand experience with the Balanced Math Model. Such political rhetoric does nothing to further what is best for our children. What is best for all children is the opportunity to be met at their level of understanding and moved along in their conceptual understanding. Exposure to many strategies assures that all children can access the curriculum. To return to rote algorithms is a turn back in time. Just ask some of the critics to explain how to solve 323 divided by three without pencil and paper. I doubt how many could. My fourth graders at year end will easily perform this computation. Lastly, the amazing success we have seen in the upper grades in terms of students' ability to think flexibly and critically can only be furthered by earlier student exposure to such a model. Please consider my opinion and the opinions of teachers in the classroom, and adopt the new pre-K two curriculum and support the recommendations of the textbook review committee.
Thank you. As a reminder, I don't like to interrupt members of the public. Sometimes I've interrupted members of the board and have gotten myself into trouble, thinking last meeting that I perhaps cut off Mrs. Gerber sooner than I should have. But I do remind everybody that we're here to talk about principles and not personalities, and comments about whether people's opinions are good, bad, or indifferent. I would ask members of the public to not include those in your comments. Please, your name and address.
Hello, my name is Raina Holinsky. I live in Trumbull, Connecticut, but I've been teaching fourth grade in Fairfield for seven years, and I also taught in another district for four. I'm also the mother of a second grader. I have taught both textbook and the current instructional model, and I am here today to strongly support this math instructional model for K through two. As a kid, I can remember math being taught one way. You memorized it. Now, kids are taught to understand math. The instructional model allows students to share their ideas, manipulate concrete models, create visual solutions, and share strategies. Children can justify their reasoning to prove that there is more than one way to solve a problem. One can quickly witness the math vocabulary, the conversation, the number sense children have in a classroom that follows this model. Children are taught strategies to find the way that works for them, the way that makes sense to them, the way that allows them to be in charge of their understanding. Children should not be afraid of math. They should be in charge of math. The instructional model allows them to do just that.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Sure thing. My name is Martha Murphy. I live at 720 Wellington Drive in Fairfield. I have two children at Dwight Elementary School, and I am a teacher at Riverfield School, where I've been for the past 13 years. I taught fifth grade for many years, and I'm currently teaching second grade. I'm speaking tonight in support of the new pre-K to two math curriculum. Since the beginning of the year, I have had several opportunities to review and teach some elements of the Balanced Instructional Model. I have witnessed an amazing shift in the way my students are thinking about math. They are using different strategies to solve math problems. I often observe my students engaged in conversations, discussing a variety of ways to solve problems. For example, one such conversation involves students discussing the best way to add double-digit numbers. They came up with a variety of strategies, including using an open number line, making tens, breaking apart numbers, and using coins. I embrace their thinking and allow them to utilize strategies that work best for their learning. Students are demonstrating a better conceptual understanding of mathematics, and I feel it would be an injustice to not support this model. I ask you, please, support the adoption of the pre-K to two curriculum and the recommendations of the textbook review committee, and I ask you to look through a clear lens at what all of this is really about, the students, their learning, and what is best for all students in Fairfield. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Roxby. I am the principal at Roger Sherman School. I do not live in town. I live in Guilford, Connecticut. We, the 11 principals and the ECC coordinator of the Fairfield Elementary Schools, support the pre-K to proposed mathematic curriculum. Each school has implemented this model in grades three, five, and we have observed a positive shift in how students think and express their thinking in mathematics. Our students are learning how to solve many challenging equations by utilizing alternative methods in addition to the traditional algorithms. We have had many professional conversations about how different our mathematical lives would have been if we had been taught to think about mathematics in this new way when we were young learners. We want to assure you that we expect our students to master and be fluent in basic numeric operations. We believe that the proposed curriculum addresses both the basic fact-qual requirement, as well as allowing students to develop their own meaning of solving challenging, real-life mathematical problems. The new assessments aligned to the Common Core standards, as well as the current Connecticut Mastery Test, ask students to solve challenging problems and communicate their ideas. We cannot tell you how exciting it is to observe students working together to solve rigorous problems and debating the process with their peers. Imagine reading a book and never discussing it with anyone else. That is the power of these debates and conversation, and it facilitates the deeper understanding of mathematics. We thank you for your work on behalf of the students of the Fairfield Public Schools, and we welcome you to visit any of our schools and see mathematics in action if this would assist you in clarifying any of your questions. Please contact any one of us to arrange a visit.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Matt Ondurco. I'm a fifth grade teacher at North Stratfield, and I live in Shelton. I stood up here last year in support of the district's three-five math curriculum, and in short, I can honestly say that today, I feel even stronger about the curriculum, especially because my current students have had the benefit of working in this model their previous year in fourth grade. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Kristin Bruno. I'm the coordinator of Early Childhood Special Education for the district. This is a board, and I'm forever grateful, that has frequently and consistently expressed your support for early learning, and I ask for your support in supporting the pre-K to two math curriculum. I want to speak on behalf of the district pre-K teachers that participated with the facilitation from Walter Wakeman in the writing of the curriculum, that work over the summer. That work has allowed for us to move a strong program forward by aligning the expectations for what students should know and be able to do across all of the district pre-K classrooms and in alignment with the expectations for kindergarten. The implementation of this curriculum will allow us to better prepare our students for kindergarten and to share meaningful information with the receiving schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Matthew Swere, 69 Ronald Drive here in Fairfield. I'm the first non-educator to, excuse me, come up for public comments. I will abstain about commenting on the curriculum, as that's a pretty long and involved document. But when it comes to the text, perhaps one of the things that I'm most concerned about, I have a daughter in the kindergarten program and soon to have a son as well at Jennings. I'm concerned much on your comments about the long-term viability of the Turk Investigations Program, and would really sort of seek to focus on the Singapore method. I did come and review the texts when they were available for parents right over there, and just going through the texts by myself, you know, the rigor in the Singapore method, as well as the math and focus, just really appealed to my sense of what math education was about. And yes, I'm not an educator, so to all the teachers out there, you know, I may speak from ignorance, but I do use math every day in my job, and I know that a solid foundation, you know, builds a long-term numeracy and ability to work in math. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
I'm Kathleen Rupert, 180 Warwick Ave.
I'm Pam Williams, 36 Golden Hill Trumbull, and I'm a math-science teacher at Riverfield.
And my name is Mary Tappy. I live at 459 Churchill Road in Fairfield. I'm the MST at Holland Hill. I previously taught third grade at Holland Hill for six years.
I'm the parent of two middle school students and a teacher here in Fairfield. We're here speaking tonight on behalf of the math-science teachers from the 11 elementary schools. We'd like to highlight some of the most important roles teachers and students play in the Balanced Instructional Model being implemented in our elementary schools. Fairfield teachers play an integral role in students' daily mathematical learning. Typical lesson begins with fluency, which provides students with regular fact practice and daily review. Teachers then introduce a topic of the day and develop and share strategies with students during the mini lesson. Students are then sent off to practice. Sometimes students work in pairs that have been carefully selected by the teacher, while other times, they work independently. Students are accountable for their learning, and as they practice new concepts and skills, teachers assess and monitor their understanding. One way they do this is through deliberate questioning and small group instruction. Teachers are teaching 100% of the time, frequently asking questions such as, "How do you know?" "What does this mean?" and "Will this work with other numbers?" Through questioning and observation, teachers are able to recognize each student's entry point into the math concept of the day. This then allows teachers to move about the room and differentiate for students by supporting or extending them as needed. Thoughtful dialogue between students and teachers helps students clarify their thinking and reflect on their strategies. The lessons draw to a close with students and teachers reconvening to highlight math strategies and practices of the day. Students explain their work, justify their reasoning, and question each other's thinking. In this model, teachers are actively engaged as they guide and monitor students' learning. Student engagement is a very important feature of the Balanced Instructional Model. Through this model, we are developing flexible math thinkers who can problem-solve, work with others, and seek out efficient strategies.
Thank you. Do all three of you plan on speaking?
Yes.
Okay, so you each have two minutes.
Yes.
This model provides many opportunities for students to examine a concept through multiple strategies, as well as to participate in meaningful mathematical discourse. Here are some examples across the grade levels. In kindergarten, working in a unit on early number sense, students quickly glance at an image of fireflies before they disappear. The students then discuss with each other the groupings of fireflies and how these smaller groups make up a larger amount. These young mathematicians are excited to explain what they saw. As individuals share their thoughts and circle groups of fireflies for others to see, the teacher asks questions to guide the students to deeper understanding. The students are actively engaged, and as they explain their noticings, their understanding deepens. As the teacher listens and helps students clarify their thinking, she's also able to note students' different levels of understanding. In second grade, mathematicians practice adding two-digit numbers through multiple strategies. They think about tens and ones, some demonstrating their thinking using an open number line, while others take numbers apart to put them together in more efficient ways. The focus is not just on adding, but on place value and understanding how to add. Foundations in understanding tens, place value, and money taught earlier in the year prepare students to explore addition comfortably and build to more complex concepts. They are not just given a method for solving, but the tools to think flexibly. In fifth grade, students work on more complex problems that mirror real-life situations. Students are invested in finding solutions and work together to explain their thinking. These more involved problems require students to break the problem into smaller parts, refer to previous strategies and dialogue to find the most efficient method to solve the problem.
Thank you very much.
In the Balanced Instructional Model, students are actively engaged in their own learning and are given rich experiences that challenge them. Multiple paths to a solution are encouraged. As students work through problems, they develop strategies, and by developing their own strategies and explaining them to others, students internalize concepts more deeply. In this model, mastery of concepts is expected for all students. Fact fluency for all students is also absolutely essential. Students are not only accountable for knowing the facts, but also understanding them and seeing relationships between numbers. Pre- and post-unit assessments, as well as monthly fluency tests, gauge student learning. In closing, our classrooms are communities of mathematicians, a place where children explore interesting problems, generate solutions, justifications, and proofs, a place where teachers support, teach, and challenge children to ensure that important strategies and skills are being developed. It is important that the curriculum and instructional model used in grades pre-K through two build the foundations for the work being done in grades three through five. We MST's believe in the mathematical learning that is taking place in our elementary schools and encourage you to come see it in action. We request that the board adopt the new pre-K to two curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will say our district insurance company appreciates people who are tall, who do not bump their heads on the TV. So, your name and address, please.
Yes, I am Anthony Abazia. I live at 76 Juniper Lane in Southport. I must say that talking about the curriculum, I think that it is great that we are improving the standards that we have. I think that the standard should be at least as far as has been suggested by the Mr. Wakeman. I would want to add that I'm not only a citizen, a taxpayer, I'm also a mathematician and a businessman. I think the board member, and I'm not very good with names, but the board member that suggested that there needs to be research with what is done, made some excellent points. I think that research is very vital to what we're doing. But I must say, as a businessman, I'm woefully and terribly disappointed with some of the information that Mr. Wakeman presented. There was a slide that mentioned budget implications, and I'm not sure if this board has no responsibility to the taxpayers, but there's not a dollar on that page where we talk about budget implications. We need to have not only a well-thought-out curriculum, but we also need to consider the costs of the Fairfield taxpayers when we entertain this curriculum. And I think that this board should not accept reports like this that don't have those budget implications and the dollar values of those budget implications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Sarah Bocari, and I live at 301 Athley Road in Fairfield. I would like to speak on behalf of the Jennings School staff. Our teachers in grades three through five have implemented the math instructional model for a year now, and are so thankful to the board's approval to move this forward. As a kindergarten teacher, I've had the opportunity to work with some of the units this year and learn about the instructional model. My classroom is alive with discussion, excitement, and wonder. As the primary grades explored the instructional model, it was incredible to see how even kindergarteners thought so deeply about math concepts. My students were not just thinking about numbers anymore as symbols on a number line above my smartboard. The students are thinking about whether or not a smaller number could be seen in a bigger number. Of course, my students looked at me like I was crazy for asking this question or even making them explore this any further. Once they built towers to demonstrate numbers, they were excited to tell their friends all about how, yes, three is inside of four and five, and they were proving how they knew this. Differentiation is naturally embedded in the instructional model. Every child was working to solve the same problem, but it was incredible to see their different approaches. The students were then talking about their approaches and finding more efficient ways to solve problems because of the discussions they were having with their peers. As a teacher, I've never worked harder when delivering these math lessons. It was important to question the students, push the students, and think with the students to guide my students in their thinking. By monitoring my students while they were investigating, exploring, and grasping the mathematical concept, I had a clear understanding of my students' abilities and how I could bring them further along. As these units unfolded in our classrooms this year, our students were applying their knowledge of the mathematical concepts discussed on their daily activities at home. The students were creating pictures to have their parents subitise. They were using their food at snack and showing all the ways to make their number eight. Kindergarteners are talking at snack about how eight can be seen as three pretzels on top and five on the bottom. They were challenging their friends at the table to think of other ways to move the pretzels to show eight. They were using the word "strategy" in my classroom while they were eating. Their strategy was to move one pretzel from the bottom row to the top row every time.
Excuse me. We've hit the time, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
(laughter)
Please state your name and address.
Anne Marie Harper, 166 Buena Vista Road. I feel that I bring a unique perspective to all of this math talk, because not only am I the parent of a fourth and sixth grader here in Fairfield, I am currently a fourth grade teacher in Westport using Singapore Math, and before that, I was a fourth grade teacher in New Canaan using Turk. So, two of my absolute favorite programs or resources are being talked about here tonight. There is no one program or resource that... There is no one program or resource that has everything. I do agree with that. However, after almost 20 years of teaching, I feel that Singapore comes as close as you're going to get. As a teacher, I admire the teachers here in Fairfield. I respect them tremendously and have seen incredible growth in my own children. However, I was surprised that the majority of them really felt that a patchwork resource was better than a full program. And I call it a program because that's what it is. You have this resource, you can open up the book, and with the right training, you can teach the children in your class, yet you can have your own flair and flavor to your lesson. So, I hope that over the next few weeks, as you're making those decisions, that you consider a resource that really, truly does have what it takes to get the results that we're looking for here in Fairfield. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you start, based on who's there, I think we probably need a motion to extend to like 11:10.
Can you just ask them to line up if there's anybody else so we can do this? Motion to extend.
Ms. Iaccona suggests that, have I counted correctly, the number of people who still want to speak?
Is there anybody else?
And assuming nobody is raising their hand or running up to the line, then 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 16, so like 11:10, I think we'll get it covered. A motion to extend to 11:10?
Do you want to make it 11:15, just to be safe? Because we can end sooner.
A motion to 11:15? Is there a second? Mrs. Cannelli, all in favor of extending to 11:15? It is unanimous. Thank you.
My name is Susan Belissimo. I live at 175 Mills Park Drive. I'm a parent of a fourth and fifth grader. I'm going to put my own unique perspective on this. I don't understand math. I went to the Rhode Island School of Design, and I learned there how to think. When we had designs and we needed to present them, we presented them for critiques to our classes, to architects, and we had to defend our thinking. This has enabled me, in all of my future endeavors, which have been vastly different than interior architect, to apply, it wasn't $100,000 wasted, apply that knowledge to being able to conceptualize, organize, and I relate this to a class I took in Egyptian history where the teacher insisted, "We learn every date, every period." And I said, "I can memorize it, I can do it, but I'm going to forget it in two weeks." No, you'd need that to get the grade. And I did it, and I got an A, and I don't remember a thing. So, if that's the old curriculum, where it was more, as I remember, you were taught to, you sat and listened instead of participating, it's very easy to tune out, it's very easy to not understand what's going on. The new curriculum, from what I'm gathering and in that video that showed, these kids are participating in the conversation, they're being asked to explain their reasoning, they're being asked to present their ideas in front of their classmates. That's an enormous step forward. We're teaching them to be creative thinkers. We don't need calculators, we can pull them out. We need these kids to be able to think. And if that's the change in curriculum, as I understand it, please support it. I believe it's very worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
It's Nicola Kunar, 95 Holiday Road, Fairfield. I'll be very short. Conceptualizing math, to me, is a nice-to-have. I don't think it's a need. My entire focus and my thing about this entire curriculum is what's going to happen later on. Yes, we're talking about addition, we're talking about math, different ways to get to numbers. As far as I know, math is black and white. You have something, and there is one answer to it. You can talk about it in groups, and everybody can figure out something, but not everybody's going to come to the same answer. But in math, there is one answer for every problem. When you get to middle school, when you get to high school and you have to get equations, quadratic equations, you have to memorize theorems, yes, you have to memorize it, but that's just math. It has to be done. The future is in technology, it's in computer science, it's in everything that has a basic core of math. And if it's all about doing things in groups and thinking about this, I don't think that's a good way to go. That's sad to say.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jerry McCormick, 101 Waterville Road, Southport. I've got three kids in the Fairfield School District. Like, there's been a lot of talk about the benefits of the new curriculum, particularly in the three-to-five-year-old, three through fifth grades. We had a pilot with four of our schools in 2010 through 2012. The data that was presented on that, the blue ribbon in fluency test numbers, did not show an appreciable difference for the pilot versus non-pilot schools. But when the CMT results are looked at, I looked at the local data for the CMT results, I compared it to before and compared it to the Fairfield overall during the time of the pilot. Now, the goal of the new curriculum and the Common Core is to increase the capability of our students. That is not what the CMT data showed. The numbers showed that while the new curriculum has positive effects on students' abilities in some of the schools, particularly Burr and Dwight, it had negative impacts in others, in Jennings and in Holland Hill. In 2009, all four pilot schools were performing above the Fairfield averages. In the 2010 to 2012 periods, Fairfield overall improved in both the percentage of students at proficiency and at goal levels. In the same timeframe, Dwight and especially Burr showed positive growth in its fourth graders' capabilities. Holland Hill and Jennings students showed less capability in the same timeframe, and were in fact both below their 2009 percentages in each of the years 2010, 2011, and 2012, and the students dropped below the Fairfield average. Why did this happen? Why did the common, the new curriculum work in Burr and Dwight, but not in Holland Hill and in Jennings? How can we institutionalize what happened at Dwight and Burr? You know, did they implement the curriculum differently? Is this what happens when we have a patchwork curriculum or resource for the curriculum? Is it the homogeneous math programs in Dwight and Burr that made the difference? There's a finite amount of time in the school year to acquire the skills and automaticity.
Sure, unfortunately, if you have your last sentence.
Okay. Needed to get to the next level, contextual examples are important, but only if they're used with actual math and rigor and focus.
Thank you very much. State your name and address.
Sure. Good evening. Tricia Donovan, 164 Tainer Drive. I would just like to say that everyone here tonight is concerned with the same goal. We want to make Fairfield students excellent at math, and I'm very happy to see all the different partners that are here to talk about this. But most disappointing tonight is the fact that we keep talking about teaching to the test, instead of talking about what the kids need to know to be successful in math. We know that in elementary school, this is the time to set the foundational skills for algebra. This is the gatekeeping class for higher-level mathematics. We want our students to learn with understanding and precision. Math is unfortunately a ruthlessly cumulative and vertically building domain, and cobbling together resources does not meet these needs. We have all seen the data, especially recently, that remedial math levels are rising at the college level, and fully 63% of students taking remedial math in college do not earn their degrees. Students must do well in algebra to be successful in math or to go into STEM fields. I would like to see our discussion on curriculum and resources focused solely on laying a firm foundation for algebra and not how we're going to teach to a test that hasn't yet been created.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
My name is Eileen Liu. I live at 101 Waterville Road. And I just wanted to start and say that I'm sure all of you have seen my research document that has been distributed wildly throughout the town without me even, like, having any control over it. So, I apologize for that. But needless to say, I think the research needed to be done, it needed to be done by someone, because clearly it would not otherwise have surfaced in this presentation. So, I hope you've all taken the time to look at the facts and actually read the attachments, because these are not my words. Going into this, I had absolutely no clue what these four options were. Afterwards, I think I know a lot about all of the four options, and I'm hoping a lot of people in this room do as well if they actually took the time to read the documents. So, let me say to start off that the mathematic instruction curriculum is much better than what we had before. I mean, I have to say that. It is much better, because before, the kids didn't have to learn to count to 1,000 until third grade. So, you know what? Awesome, we're doing much better. But the question for me is, is this really best-in-nation? This is our chance to make Fairfield a best-in-nation town. Are we doing them the justice to bring them to that point where they are going to rival those in Asia, in Russia, in Westport? I want to know that question, and that's my concern. Because when I hear professors from Harvard telling me that various curriculum that we seem to prefer for some reason is insufficient and is closing our kids out of science and math fields because of their elementary math education, and that they will hit a wall in eighth grade and not be able to move on, and it goes on and on, and that, what was the other quote? Oh, by fifth grade, they'll be two years behind in math. I find that to be very, very disconcerting. So, in conclusion, I would say that we have to listen to the facts, the empirical evidence that's been presented by the various teachers from Westport, from my husband, who took a lot of time to look through all those numbers. These numbers matter. They are part of the research. And so, I hope that you take those into consideration. I really hope you take another look at Singapore math, because I think it is the best-in-nation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Liu. Please state your name and address.
Dawn Llewellyn, 524 Sturgis Road. For years, we've been hearing administrators saying, "Trust us. We differentiate instruction material in the classroom," yet it hasn't been working. Until recently, even math curriculum leaders have sent their children to Kumon. Math teachers that stood up here on this podium praising CPM curriculum even sends her daughter to Mathnasium. So, if the curriculum is not working for them, why is it working for us? Do any of the teachers have knowledge of how their students perform five years after they leave elementary school? Flexible grouping is the answer to that man's question regarding Burr and Dwight. Flexible grouping occurs there. It's an instructional method of grouping students on knowledge readiness. Faster groups move, spend less time on pictorial stage, more time on abstract and in-depth. Struggling groups will have the time to spend on the pictorial to master the concepts. This has been implemented in Dwight for about eight years, and Burr maybe six. Last year, Burr was recognized for its exemplary programming of flexible grouping in math by the Connecticut Associations of Schools. So, why isn't it offered in the other schools? Even though parents like myself for years have been asking for this. Dr. Tile has stated over the last three years he's been here, and I quote in the paper, "Emphasis is on instruction in the classroom. It's key and the fastest route to helping children." On numerous occasions, he's also said, "His goal is to get all the elementary schools to offer consistent, quality programming. Instruction in the classroom is the big drive for him." So, why doesn't every elementary school have this exemplary instructional model, I ask? Is it our district leaders don't believe in ability grouping? The emphasis is on full inclusion with the burden of the so-called differentiation instruction of material placed on the teachers? Even in high school, we only have two levels, surrounding districts, three to four. Middle school eliminated LA levels. One level for math was done away with a few years ago. Surrounding districts have two to three. And in the elementary, other districts like New Canaan, in fourth grade and fifth, they start leveling the children. So, okay, got my time.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Kelly Crisp, 194 Paper Mill Road, Paper Mill Lane, sorry. It appears as though Turk Investigation textbook edged out Singapore math and Math in Focus, and it seems to be somewhat based on adding up these variables that aren't weighted and recognizing that basic math skills should be weighted higher than the last criteria on the list. I'm concerned that once people's attention to math wanes, the issue of textbooks will be placed on the agenda for a vault, and we won't have the turnout that we have here tonight. One of the criticisms of Turk Investigation is that students will hit a wall in middle school because of the lack of a strong foundation in math skills. I just compared while we were, I was surprised that New Canaan had selected Turk, and evidently they had been using it for a long time. So, I looked on my iPhone at the strategic profiles available on the state, Connecticut State Department of Education from 2009, 2010. Those were the last available. And the elementary school, I compared Westport and New Canaan, and the elementary school scores for standardized testing were very similar across the board. I compared the high school scores, and they were very different. New Canaan used Turk Investigation for a long time. I recognize that Singapore math has just come into use there in elementary school, but it's evidence that they have a strong math program. The CAP scores for New Canaan math, and obviously that's in high school, is 52.3. The CAP scores for Westport were 86.2. By the way, ours were 66. I don't believe Turk Investigations, as demonstrated by New Canaan's CAP scores, merits our trust and faith.
Thank you very much. We've gotten down to like one clap. Please name an address.
Nadine Z, 345 Mill Hill Terrace. Since we're talking about math, we would like to start with some data. Fairfield math CMT scores in grade three to five from 2006 to 2011 show that Fairfield ranks in the bottom third of 19 towns. Avon, Darien, Easton, Farmington, Greenwich, Guilford, Madison, Monroe, Newtown, New Canaan, Reading, Ridgefield, Simsbury, Trumbull, West Hartford, Weston, Westport, and Wilton, all before us. For Mill Hill, I just got it from the government score. When I moved here, Mill Hill, 2007, was position 42. Today, Mill Hill is in 110th, ranks 110th, and all the other schools are in that position as well. Our 2011 CAP scores in math of 69, while not too far off the AG, which ranged from 62 to 72, were way off our surrounding towns, whose scores ranged from 83 to 90. Westport, Wilton, New Canaan, Ridgefield. You might ask, why these poor results? Connecticut state standards, which were in place prior to adoption of the Common Core, rated F in state standards. These very low state standards have driven the assessments with which we have been measuring our students. So, our poor CMT results in Fairfield represent even a lower level of achievement compared to other states. Higher CMT scores are not even reassuring when the standards driving these assessments are so low. Knowing this, some top-performing districts in Fairfield County have looked outside Connecticut to set higher goals. The Board of Ed has clearly stated that it wants our students to be able to compete globally, and that standards should act as a baseline and not a ceiling. We're therefore thankful that Common Core is finally addressing the lack of current focus and depth that the CMTs have been presenting. We now need real assessments.
We're at the two-minute marker.
Can I finish my sentence?
One sentence.
We now need real assessments to measure before the SBAC is in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Jay Walk. I live at 1157 Stratfield Road. I'm also an RTM member in District Six. I just first want to say, I just want to, I haven't heard tonight, that I just want to thank all the teachers in Fairfield. I think you're doing a wonderful job. I have, I'm also speaking as a parent. I have a child that's in fourth grade, and I also have a child that's in middle school, in sixth grade. If our teachers are saying that this curriculum that we're talking about now is working, then I'm supporting it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Kelly Jacobson. I live at 335 Acorn Lane in Southport, and I really appreciate the professional presentation and dissemination of information tonight. It really blew me away. So, I thank you, and I thank the board for the challenging questions that you've been asking. So, I wasn't planning on speaking here tonight, but I just have to say that I was a little disappointed that we don't have a solid recommendation going forward. In my professional career, I learned early on a really good lesson, and that was, you can have 10 right answers and one perfect answer. And if you can at least get to that one right answer, you're in a really great place. And to find that one perfect answer, it could take you forever, and it'll really hinder your progress. And I'm afraid that if we keep searching for that perfect textbook when it seems as though we have a really great option with Singapore math, that we're going to hinder our progress here. And the other thing, as a parent and a very involved parent, I'm really hungry to see a textbook, I'm hungry to see information. I have an extensive background in business, and I feel as though if I knew better about what my child was learning, he's in the first grade, I can do a really great job helping him to find these real-world examples that will take his learning to another level. And I'm afraid that if it's left to us to create our own textbook or version of a textbook to take the learning, to take our curriculum and bring it home to us, it's not going to quite measure up to what's already been out there and what's already been proven. So, thank you again.
Thank you very much. We are not allowed to extend only one extension, so I'll have to say that these are the last three speakers, and that will give enough time for open board comment and adjourn just in time. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Annie Brayley, and I live at 82 Bibbins Avenue here in Fairfield. First of all, thank you so much for all the hard work of the committee and all the teachers. I have twins who are in first grade, and I know- I have twins who are in first grade, and I know how hard it is for everybody to do what they do in order to come up with all the research and the presentation. However, tonight, as a Fairfield school-age parent, I am very disappointed to hear that we're not adopting a proven math curriculum and a program. Instead, we, as parents, are asked to forego a highly praised and proven program for our children and go with a patchwork approach. And I will tell you that, as a parent of twins, my girls are in separate classes, and they come home with different things for math. Forget everything else, we're just talking math here. One always has math homework, and one never does. And when asked about what they're doing in school as math, it's always different. And granted, you know, I'm doing supplemental work at home so that they are always at the same stage, as far as I can tell. And when I moved to this town from New York, Fairfield was told to me that it's one of the best school systems in the state and one of the best school systems in the country. And having done some research myself and realizing that aside from Dwight and Burr, the majority of our schools are not even the top 15% of the state, and our district is only the 30th out of the 165th. We're behind a lot of other districts that spend a lot less per student than we do here in Fairfield. So first, what happened to all the money that we're spending? Throwing more money is not the solution here. As a parent here, I realize that without a cohesive and carefully sequenced curriculum along with a supporting text, we have very little hope of improving our math performance as a district. So as a parent, and I urge the board to push for the adoption of one of the Singapore Math to further our goal of providing the best education possible for our children here in Fairfield. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
John Llewellyn, 524 Sturgis Road. You've heard that before. I want to thank the teachers, first of all, for coming here tonight because I know it's very late and it's difficult for you all to have to get up here and speak. But I do want to point out what, I had actually no intention of speaking tonight, but as I sit back there, I listen, and what I'm observing is that we got to hear a lot of good things of kind of what's happening in the classroom, but then when you want to hear about results, it's the parents who are bringing forth the statistics that are showing what works and what doesn't work. And what's really disturbing is hearing what's going on with the test scores and where Fairfield is ranking. I think it's time to return leveling. I think it's time to adopt a proven top-class program and stop experimenting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker of the evening.
Yes, hello. Hi, my name is Vasy Dulles. I live at 896 Mill Plain Road. Just have faith in our educators, won't you? An emotional parent recently addressed me at my daughter's school. The woman was objecting to a movement by a group of parents in support of implementing the Singapore Math program in the district and the use of a unified resource for K-2 curriculum delivery across the school district. As I silently listened to her, I asked myself the question, "Can we indeed blindly trust the educators?" That day, as I was driving home, I kept thinking about the phrase that was stuck in the back of my head. I could relate to that parent. Less than two years ago, I was just like her. I was one of those blindly trusting parents. I fully trusted, then since we had the highest compensated superintendent in the state and school administrators that were making more than the first election, that things would be okay, that my daughter was receiving exemplary education. I strongly believed that the responsible people in the central office were ensuring that standardized scores across the districts were continuously improving and that our schools were among the very best in the state. My belief system was suddenly crushed as I opened the weekly edition of The Minuteman one sunny September day last year, and in the front page of the newspaper, it read that my daughter's school had failed the CMTs. How could that be? Isn't our elementary school one of the best, I asked myself? As it turns out, not everything is the way the educators presented. I learned that the Fairfield School District is not one of the best in the state, contrary to what many Fairfield educators and school administrators would like you to believe. Looking at the facts, it became clear that we do not have a homogeneous school system, with schools performing equally well across the district.
Excuse me. Unfortunately, I've.
I know you have a tendency to always interrupt me, but.
No, I have a tendency to stay for two minutes.
I definitely noticed that. Over the last few meetings, you have interrupted me every single time.
We have to stay consistent.
Okay, I'm going to finish my last sentence.
I'm sorry, but we have like two minutes to finish.
Okay, next time, I'm going to be bringing my own timer.
I recognize that teachers who are accustomed to working with third graders in a classroom, and when you come here and have to present to a scary Board of Education in front of a large audience, and I very much appreciate the quality as well as the, just the presentation that you made. I also want to thank members of the public who may have a different opinion, but for your courtesy as well. Any comments for open board comment?
I have a public comment.
We have one public comment that will make part of the record. Any comments for open, we'll just make it part of the record. Any comments for open board comment? Yes.
Real quick, in our superintendent report next time, can we just get an update of where we are because the evaluation for teachers will be due?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Anything else? A motion to adjourn?
It's about moved.
Mrs. Iaccona, Mrs. Gerber, on favor, say aye. We're out of here.